Call the 2018 Annual Meeting of the Hudson School District to order. At this time, I would introduce myself. I'm Jamie Johnson, the President. Vice President is Heather Logan, who's standing. And Kerry Whittaker is our clerk. Kerry, raise your hand. All right. Bruce Hanson, Treasurer. Rob Brown, member. Sue Kitas, member. And Bob Baumann, member. All right. At this time, and then Superintendent is Dr. Nick Olet. And also speaking tonight will be our Chief Financial and Operations Officer, Tim Erickson. This time, I'll turn it over to our Parliamentarian, Shayna Lewis.
Thank you. We are here tonight pursuant to the Wisconsin Statute 120.08. The Hudson School District, like all common school districts in the state of Wisconsin, is required to hold an annual meeting to allow the district's electors to take action regarding specific powers that are reserved to them, including but not limited to those items described in Wisconsin Statute 120.10. Electors are those residents of the district who are 18 years of age or older. In the event that we have concerns about the status of an individual speaking tonight who is a resident, we will address that matter at this time, at that time. Now is the time to elect a chairperson for the annual meeting. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Sue Kitas.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay, Sue has been nominated. Is there a second?
Second.
The electors, which includes the members of the Board, may vote. All those in favor of Sue Kitas as the chairperson, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Nay. Hearing none, Sue Kitas is elected your chairperson of the annual meeting.
Sue, I need you to move over here.
Oh, okay.
We welcome everyone that's here tonight and just want to say that I'm reminded that maybe for some of you, this might be a holiday for Rosh Hashanah. So I'll say good Rosh Hashanah to you, good New Year. Shayna, do you want to do some other preliminary comments?
I am good. Thank you.
All right. Then we'll move on to highlights of the school district and Dr. Nick Olet will do that presentation.
All right. Thank you, Sue. And I think up on the screen, if I'm correct, there'll be kind of a slideshow of just different things that have gone on in the district. Typically, I have a PowerPoint, but a lot of it's just the same stuff that I'm talking to you about. So we thought we'd take this opportunity to share some photos of what's going on in the district over the last year. And I know for the folks sitting up at the table, it can be kind of hard to see, but for the hundreds that we have in attendance, they will be able to enjoy the screen. So I want to touch on a couple of things. Talking about school district, over the last few months, we've been extremely busy, not only with the, obviously, the construction projects, but just because school is out for the summer doesn't mean that we are done working with kids. And so our summer enrichment classes and specialized assistance in math and reading were held in June and August this year. We had over 1,000 elementary students and over 350 middle school students that participated in those enrichment activities. So a great opportunity to be able to do those, do those things. And we actually doubled the offerings because we had a session in June and we had a session in August. We also had almost another 300 high school students that attended summer school courses for credits and working through those things. So just, just there alone, we have almost 1,800 students that are, were in our buildings attending, attending courses. In addition to that, we had over 1,200 students that participated in our summer swim program. We also had another 400 children that were enrolled in our, our school age care backpacker program. And so we were, it's just a, a great program for us. So just because school is out for the summer doesn't mean that we, we stopped teaching and kids stopped learning. Couple of district-wide initiatives, I want to give some highlights over the last year. No surprise that our biggest initiative has been the high school construction project. When everything is complete, we'll have added over 130,000 square feet of learning space for our students and staff and community. This building project, as I talked about in the last meeting, has, has been a great project for us. It was really exciting to be here in the building today as the kids walked in and got to see the building for the first time. And even in the last week, when we had staff in the building really for the first time, it's just, it was really a rejuvenating experience as they just found their way around the building. So if you hadn't had the opportunity to, to take tours of the building, please find some time to do so. We will be having our, our open house on October 2nd. So the evening of October 2nd coming up here, where we'll be dedicating the building. We also completed our third year of the teacher salary structure implementation and will begin our first year of our new support salary structure. We had a great amount of feedback, as you looked at and approved in the last, last meeting, that we're making tweaks to the salary structure and continue to try to make it an effective program to both attract, retain, and recruit staff as we, as we work through the system. Also, in this past year, we implemented our 4K community program, our, sorry, our community 4K program, serving our youngest learners, those would be kids that are four years old. This is a program that is, is near and dear to my heart. Obviously, I have a child in the program, but I've seen tremendous opportunities with, with preschool programs. And so it's been really great to be able to implement that. In Hudson, we had over 300 children involved in our community-based 4K program. And it, and it's very unique because it allows us to partner with the members of the community to provide a public access or free access to a public education. And so that's been a great program. This year, I believe we have over 360 children signed up for our 4K program. So we're pretty excited about that. We also, we've started the community engagement process this, this past year to talk about elementary boundaries and resetting of elementary attendance boundaries across our six elementary schools. That's been a great process. We had lots of people volunteer to be a part of that committee structure. We were able to get great representation across the district and across the different geographical points of the district so that we made sure that everybody's voice, to the best of our ability, is being heard as we work through it. We know that our growth, at least from what we're projecting, is going to happen probably on our south and our southeast side of the district. That also happens to be the elementary boundaries where our most full elementaries are. And so we'll be doing some balancing in order to be able to handle that upcoming growth. Our next community forum will be on September 25th at 6:00. And so that's an opportunity for community to see another round or another shot at, at drawing elementary boundaries and then be able to provide feedback. And I know, obviously, most of the Board of Education, if not all, will be there. But now it's time to do a little bit of bragging about the district. So we've talked about some of the initial initiatives. And one of the things that I talked about this last Wednesday when we met, we had all of our staff here in the auditorium, is, one of the things is that a lot of our awards tend to come at the high school level. And it's not because we don't have great things going on in our elementaries, it's just that high schools tend to be some of the more, you know, visual parts of our school district. And so when I talk to the staff about this, you know, it's interesting because kids don't come to us in kindergarten knowing how to do AP physics or being able to do AP Lang and Lit, and that it's actually the culmination of activities that happen over the course of the 12 and 13 years that the kids are a part of the Hudson School District that, that allow us to achieve some of these awards. And so it's really, it's really a district award, even though it's the high school that's being recognized. So as I move through these, so The Washington Post named Hudson High School as one of the most challenging high schools in America, when they, the top 12% of high schools made this list. EP Rock Elementary received the Let's Move Active Schools National Award for getting kids up and getting them moving, moving and staying active. The U.S. News and World Report ranks Hudson High School as the seventh-best high school in the state of Wisconsin, looking at graduation rates, looking at AP testing and college readiness. We had eight high school state honors musicians and 16 middle school state honors musicians. Hudson High School was named a Project Lead the Way School of Distinction. It is one of only 133 schools across the country that have been given this honor. The Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction has named Hudson High School as a pay-setter school based on the number of students taking and passing AP exams. It's the highest honor that can be bestowed upon a high school for advanced placement. Hudson Community and Hudson School District was named a 2018 Best Community for Music for the sixth time. Our ACT composite score for all 11th graders was 23 compared to the state average of 20.5, which is quite an accomplishment. We had 183 AP scholars and 13 national AP scholars who received an average score of at least four or higher on all their AP exams taken. We had five National Merit Scholars. We won the WIA Award of Excellence for exhibiting a high level of sportsmanship and ethics and integrity. We had 16, or 16 graduates that are pursuing athletics in their sport at the college level. Our gymnastics team received the sportsmanship award for their, for their sport. We had over 520 girls and over 600 boys participate in athletics this past year. Throughout the year, we had students competing in the Science Olympia, the Badger State Spelling Bee, Letters About Literature, Destination Imagination, DECA, Math Masters, and so much more. At the middle and high school levels, we had over 2,000 students participate in activities outside the school day. Why that's an important number is because one thing that we do know very well, that students that feel like they're connected to buildings tend to do what better academically. And having our kids connected to school more than just the academic pieces is definitely a, a big plus for us. We had some great staff, or, sorry, staff state recognitions. Katie Murphy was named the American Geographical Society Geography Teacher Fellow, one of only 50 teachers in the, across the U.S. And just Tuesday of last week, we learned that Luke Chaffey was named this year's Geography Teacher Fellow as well. The school district has been asked to present at Wasby and the state convention on our teacher salary structure and also our community engagement process during construction. So we have so much to be proud of here in the Hudson School District, so many different things that, that go on. And obviously, just the day-to-day accomplishments that we have as we work with all children in order to ensure that we get them to reach their fullest potential. So that's kind of a recap or highlights for the, for the year.
If you have any questions for any of the presentations tonight, we have a microphone in the front, on the west side aisle. Thank you, Dr. Olet.
Thank you.
And now we'll hear from our Board Treasurer, Bruce Hanson. Do you want to be, does he have to go to the podium? No, you can just be comfortable.
Very nice. Gosh, thank you very much. Well, good evening. As Sue said, my name is Bruce Hanson, the Hudson School Board Treasurer. Welcome to the annual board meeting. And thank you all for those that are present. I think I know most of you and let's say, rate or pride, huh? Very, very good for you to make it. Also, just want to take this moment to, to thank the community members in the Hudson area. I mean, we, we are really blessed for the support that we get and for the support that the community members bring for academics and education in the Hudson area. It's very grateful for that. I'd like to thank Tim and the financial team for the effort that went into this budget. Additionally, I know budget, budget takes a lot of hard work from a lot of different people. Many, many effort, and efforts from many areas within the district, including Dr. Olet, cabinet members, our staff, teachers, and many other areas across the district. We have a lot of things, as Nick said, to be proud of in the school district and certainly excited to be back in this building for this annual meeting. Last year, we were in another building. Also, having two boys in the district as well as being a tax member, I can assure you that, you know, this board acts with the best interests of the students in mind while making smart decisions with the community tax dollars along the way. A few things to note, one measure of financial health within the district's total educational, is, is the district's total educational cost per member. As reported by the Department of Public Instruction, Hudson's investment is $11,992. The state average is $12,918 per member, or 7% below the state average. Also, maintaining a Moody's AA1 bond rating is a key indicator of the financial health of the district. The bond rating has helped the district with interest rate advantages in issuing and refinancing debt and keeping those costs as low as possible for our taxpayer. The AA1 bond rating reflects the district's growing tax base, strong cash reserve levels, and manageable debt levels. Additionally, the Board has a policy of maintaining the general fund reserve balance between 25 to 30% of operating expenditures. It is because of this that the policy that the district has been able to cash flow operations and not incur additional borrowing costs to operate. Few other noteworthy items here. Hudson's mill rate is estimated to increase from $10.33 last year to $10.52 this year, which is a 1.8% increase. Amongst CISA 11 regional districts in 2017, 2018, Hudson was at the median. The debt service mill rate, as projected for the high school, middle school, stadium, and auditorium referenda, were estimated to have an impact on the mill rate of 90 cents. The actual impact is about 12% lower than the projected. Also reflecting the report of our superintendent, I believe we can be proud of many of the accomplishments within the Hudson School District. Excited about our future and proud that we are getting the high value that we are for the tax dollars that we, we distribute. The proposed budget includes investment dollars to continue the implementation of the various performance pay structures, which we believe will be a key to, will be key to attracting and retaining the talent we have in the district. Salaries and benefits represent a 4.2% increase over the previous year's budget, and the increase of which is less than the percent of the overall budget increase. We expect the state aid trend under the CPI measure of inflation in future years. This translates into more reliance on the local levy to fund the schools. The proposed 2018, 2019 levy still represents an estimated $5.8 million below the maximum allowed by the state law. As the Board, or as the Treasurer of the Board of Education, I support the 2018, 2019 budget and levy. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bruce, for that presentation. It was actually very interesting. Thank you. I know numbers can be, we can lose us.
It's much easier when the Packers have a come-from-behind win last night, too.
And we have, we have a good board, a supportive board. And now we'd like to hear from Tim Erickson, our Chief Financial and Operations Officer, to present the proposed 2018, 2019 budget, which will be finalized in October because we have to wait to hear more from the legislature about what kind of funding we're going to get. But I think that the numbers that you hear tonight will be pretty close to what it will look like in October. So, Tim, thank you.
Thanks, Sue. We've got, we've got an overhead up here. It doesn't match up exactly with the book that you've got, but it's summarized. And if we tried to match it up, you wouldn't be able to read it anyway. So I'm going to jump right in. I do want to, I do want to thank all the various people that have been involved throughout the budget process, all of our different, we've got teachers, department heads, principals in different schools, administrators, Superintendent, the Board. A lot of time's been spent collectively over the past several months since about December. So as Sue mentioned, the final budget approval will take place. The Board will approve that final budget in October. And so we'll jump right into, into the presentation here. Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to actually move forward to the major assumptions, which is on page nine of your book. And, there we go. State aid equals, state equalization aid is one of our largest funding pieces for the district. This year, we're looking at about a 500, almost $600,000 less than last year. And when we look at inflation, inflation is running about 2.9% currently. The good news is we had per, per student funding, which is a categorical funding per student for the district, and that's up 1.1. There was a larger boost up per student for this year. So overall, the net aid increase is about $550,000 or 2.2%. So that's positive. I guess when we look at the aid structure, the structure of aid is changing over the state. So, you know, versus equalization aid and the per pupil categorical aid, there's a lot of, a lot of different discussion around that statewide as to whether, which one of these funding levels is the best. But right now, we, that's what we have. So if we look at the estimated mill rate, it's $10.52, which is up 1.8% from last year's rate. Property valuation is increasing a projected 3.64% this year, which, if you compare last year, it was 5.9. Our property valuation is down slightly over previous, the previous five years. State average this year is 4.5%. So it's one of the, one of the few times we've really actually been under the state average. The under levy, which was mentioned before, is 5.8 million. And that's, that is direct property tax relief to property owners in the district. That, that actually is, is dollars, those are dollars that could be levied but are not. So salaries and benefits, of course, we're in the, we're in the kid business, the people, person business. And our budget there is, it's one of our larger budget items, makes up about 75% of our total expenditures. And that's 4.2%. So salaries, wages, benefits, and includes all, all different types of, all different types of payments and benefits. So that's 4.2. And that is inclusive of our teacher salary structure, the performance pay plans, and support staff steps, and the Board-approved increase of 2%. I'll move on to the next section. And in the book, it's on page 10. This is a summary, one-page summary, summary of our general fund. And I won't, again, get into a lot of detail because we do want to, want to get out of here tonight. We've got some movement there. You can see the property tax levy, one of our largest sources of operating revenue for the district. That's about 6.9% for the, for the general fund. And open enrollment in is projected to be up substantially this year. And then notable is the equalization aid, which is line 21, again, one of those large, larger funding pieces. And that one's projected to be down 2.6%. We'll find out what those final numbers are in October when the state releases that, that data to districts. Our per pupil aid, again, that one went up substantially with the funding increase going from 450 to roughly $654 this year. So that went from 2.5 to 3.6 million. So overall, general fund revenues are up about 5.5%. The expenditure side, as mentioned before, we looked at salary and benefits. And again, they make up that larger percentage of the budget. Open enrollment out, that one's projected to increase slightly. We're looking at some various creative ways to address that deficit. So if you compare the open enrollment in revenues of 565 to the open enrollment out of 1.1, you can see why it might be a good idea to start to, to look at different ways to address that. Other purchased services include several different contracted services that the district contracts for. Anything from repairs to buildings, to transportation, to all sorts of other things that the district contracts for. Non-capital objects, those are, those are things like more harder goods, like not, not supplies, not soft goods, but things that aren't large capital purchases. And then capital objects are the things that are larger capital purchases, such as vehicles and that type of thing. Going down into the, the bottom line, the total general fund expenditures are at 4.6%. So that kind of gives you a brief overall picture of what the budget looks like. So we look at a, we're looking at a deficit of about $331,000 this year. Again, that's something that we can, we can actually do because we do have fund balance. And a fund balance policy is 25 to 30% of expenditures. So that puts us right in that realm. If we look down at the very bottom, last line of that page, we're at 26.5%. Just jumping up into that, that last section there, we have some committed, Board committed fund balances that have been set aside. One was capital projects, and we were taking 3.5 million. The Board had decided a couple of years ago during a referendum that we would, we'd allocate $3.5 million to the, the projects, the most recent construction projects. So that balance would come down to about $538,000. And then we've got insurance self-funding, that committed fund balance of 1.9. There's no change in that from last year. That is designed to help mitigate any large swings in our claims expenditures since we are a self-funded district at this point. We don't use an insurance company to, to insure. Now we just pay on a claims paid basis. So projected unassigned fund balance of 17.6 million. If we look at large maintenance and capital projects, one of the things we've done is had, is looked and studied our buildings for, and really looked out about 10 years at large maintenance projects and larger capital improvement projects. One of the things that we are doing in the, in the next, in this budget and last year's budget is really trying to incorporate as much of that as we can into operating budget. Some projects are just simply too large to do that in and will require some other different type of funding. But you can see that, that list of projects is about $600,000. And that's just, that's the short list of the larger projects. Page 12. You can see our aid membership, and that's what drives our, that's part of what drives our aid number. Over the last few years, it's been, been relatively stable. So when we look at what's happening with aid, again, when we look at that equalization aid number, that's actually going down. So that's reflecting that structural change in, in the aid formula and what's happening statewide with how districts are funded. On the next page, we look at our general fund, state aid revenue, that gives a, a good overall general picture of what's happening to the district's aid. At this point, it's trending down. We'll kind of see where that goes. It's always very, very tough to predict. It depends on the economy, depends on how the state's budget coffers are doing as well. And so we kind of, we watch that one pretty closely. We move to the next page. We've got some pie charts for your reading pleasure. And you can look at the revenues. And again, the, if you look at the local sources, that's primarily tax levy or property tax levy. And then the state sources are primarily the, those state aid sources. The district doesn't get much in the way of federal sources, where a lot of those are driven by free and reduced lunch counts. And fortunately, we're not, we don't have real high free and reduced lunch counts. That's a, that's a good thing. I guess the bad thing is we don't derive as much state, federal, federal revenue from that. But on the second page, on that next page over, we've got the pie chart on how the expenditures are, are allocated across, across the total budget. And I won't get into that because those are listed on that first summary page that we went into. So, but again, if you look at salaries and benefits for the general fund, it's, it runs about 70%. On the next page, again, I'm going to, going to move through this quickly. You can, you can take a look at this if you're really interested in going through this. It kind of, it really talks to how new construction benefits the, the taxes that someone pays on their home for any governmental entity. New construction really helps mitigate, mitigate real estate taxes as you go. So it's good to have a growing community where there's some development happening across the district. And that's, that's one of the good things that we have. We have several developments that are occurring in the city and in the townships. So, so it's good news. The very bottom table shows the percentage of new construction and what percentage of value, of existing values those are for each municipality, except for the town of St. Joe and the town of Troy, because those are lying in two different districts. And we don't have that exact breakdown until October from the Department of Revenue. If you look at page 17. 17 gives you kind of a historical perspective of where the district valuation has gone and the, and the levy and the percent change in the levy, the mill rate and the percent change in the mill rate. So going down to the bottom of that section under 2018, 2019, you can see district valuation is projected to grow about 3.6%. And if you go back up, we go look at 2013, 2014, then you can get an idea of, of those, I guess, going forward. I guess, going forward, previous to the, the years where we had a, had a decrease in valuation, and you can kind of see where we sat at this point. Total levy again is, would be 44 million, 455, so that includes the general fund and debt service. Debt service is about 6.9% on top of the general fund, or 6.9 million on top of the general fund levy. So that's a 5.5, 3% change. Mill rate brings the mill rate into 10.52, which is a 1.83% increase. And down at the bottom, you can see the different valuations for each taxing entity and how the, how the levy would be spread amongst those taxing entities. Page 18 through page 20 is a class, is a, is a presentation by function. It's probably one of the least meaningful pieces of the budget, but we do put it in because the Department of Public Instruction likes to have us put that piece in there. Just presents all the funds, but it's by function, so it's kind of tough for me to break out and say, well, what do we spend on wages? What do we spend on supplies and those types of things? But we, we put that in there as we, because we're required to do that. Page 21 is an exciting thing called a balance sheet. If you're a financial person, you'll, you'll kind of get that, but again, I, I won't get into any detail in that. One of the things we want to, we want to look at on the, on the balance sheet, though, is going to pay attention to what our fund balances, and that's down at the very bottom, and you can see that breakdown is similar to what was on the other page that I covered And page 22, that really gives a breakdown of our debt and what our position is. So the, if you look at the general obligation bonds that were issued, if you look three boxes down, general obligation bonds of 72 million, that was for the project where you're sitting right now. So then we've got an issue for nine and a half million, so those, those two issues together accounted for both the auditorium, the stadium, the high school addition and all renovations, and the middle school addition and renovations there as well. So those two middle ones are the ones that are the, the current debts. So you can see the other existing debt from previous referendums passed. And then I'm going to run into other data. So Bruce had mentioned total educational cost per member for K-12 districts across the state. You can see that if, if you look at the total educational cost, which is a bar chart on the right side of, of the, of the graph, Hudson is at 11,992. And 1617, I'd add, is the latest year of data, collective data that the state has at this point. Takes some while to get 1718 data, and then, so we go with what we've got at this point. And so 11,992, the state average is 12, 12,918. It's about a 7% difference between the state average and the Hudson School District average. And if we look at the next page, which are mill rates in our CISA eleven region, 2017, 18, Hudson is really the statistical median at this point, so Hudson's about in the middle of those 39 different regional districts. That's for 2017, 18. One thing we, we talk about quite a bit, the Hudson School District, the under levy, and again, that's, that's an amount that the board could levy but chooses not to, and if we look at that collectively over the, over the years from '03, '04 till present, the present projection, the district's under-levied about 120, over 120 million dollars as direct tax relief to taxpayers, and this year, that under levy is expected, projected to be $5.8 Again, relating to the under levy last year for 1718, district, this is statewide information, and so we summarize this in districts that have, districts with an under levy of $250,000 or greater. So if we look at that list, you can see Hudson at seven point, almost 7.7 million dollars, and you can see the number of student equivalency rates there, student, basically student count. And you can look down the list and see where other districts are and how large they are relative to Hudson, and so you can see Hudson by and far was one of the largest under levies. You know, this will be a, be a challenge going forward as, as we start to see, unless the aid, state aid level funding starts to change a little bit for us, we'll have more reliance on, on the actual local levy. But again, we have, over, over, over several years since '03, '04, we have, we have had under levies in the district. The last page is the proposed resolution for tonight that we'd like to get, get an action on. And so the tax, total tax amount is 44 million, 455, 692, and that's, again, that's property tax levy, and that is broken apart by 37 million, 527, 967,000 in the general fund, and 6 million, 927,000, 725 dollars for the debt service fund. And then the, the last part of that booklet, I'm sure everybody will want to read when they go home tonight and crawl into bed in case they have insomnia, they go ahead and read it and put you right to sleep. So that's all I've got.
Okay. Is there anyone that would like to make comment or testify or ask any questions from those in attendance? Okay. Just a comment, I find the glossary at the end of this report really helpful, another good bedtime reading. So at this time, not hearing anyone wanting to testify, I would entertain a motion to adopt the proposed budget for 2018, 2019.
Madam Chairman, be it resolved that a tax, the total amount of 44 million, 455,692, 37 million, 527,967, of which is general fund, 6 million, 927,725, of which is debt service fund, be and is hereby levied against the taxable property in the Hudson School District for school purposes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, opposition, say nay. Okay, the motion passes. We now have a proposed budget that'll be reviewed again and finalized in October. Thank you. Next, we're ready for new business, is that correct? I think we are. We're ready for new business. The first item is to set the date for our annual meeting a year from now, and the proposed date is September 9th, which is also a Monday, 2019, at 7:00 PM. Do we need a motion on that? Yes. May I have, entertain a motion to approve that date?
Madam Chair, I so move.
Okay. Second, please.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, say nay. Okay, the motion passes. We will meet almost a year from now, on the 9th of September. And now I'm open to entertaining any other matters that relate to the powers of, of the board, if anyone would like to speak.
The electors.
The electors, excuse me, the electors of the electors. Okay, I recognize Ms. Robson.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, administration, and members of the electorate. My name is Lynn Robson, and I am a former school board member, and I'm here tonight to discuss with you school board member compensation. As you all know, as part of, one of, one of the powers of the annual meeting, school board member compensation is allowed to be addressed. The last time school board member compensation was discussed and approved and changed for the Hudson School District is in 2008. So 10 years ago is when school board member compensation was changed. State law allows school board members to be paid either a flat salary or a per-meeting compensation structure, but not both. Part of the recommendation that I'm going to bring forward to you as a compensation structure in line with the new state, with the state law, and currently, the Board of Education is meeting two times per month. I'm proposing that the electorate support a per-meeting compensation structure, and while this option might require more administration on behalf of district staff, I believe that it helps with attendance and participation and tracking that. I also think attendance at continuing education and the annual school, school board convention should be included in this compensation structure, as I, I believe it helps the school board members to develop and become better at what they do. The compensation structure that I am proposing will put the Hudson Board of Education in line with comparable board of education pay scales. Currently, the compensation structure is $50 per meeting for our board of education and a flat $100 per month, which is below the surrounding districts. For these reasons, as a member of the electorate, I would like to make a motion effective in the next pay period to increase board member compensation as follows. For board members, $125 per meeting, including those other meetings that I talked about, continuing education opportunities and the state convention, and $150 per meeting for the board of education president. Thank you.
So if I'm clear, you're proposing just stipends?
A per-meeting.
Per-meeting.
So the option, Madam Chair, is either a flat salary per year or a per-meeting compensation structure. What I'm proposing is that we have a per-meeting compensation structure.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to the motion? Okay.
I'll go ahead and second the motion.
Okay. We have a motion before us to approve stipends of 120 per board member.
125.
125, excuse me, thank you, I didn't have a pen with me, and 150 for board president. So all those in favor?
Any discussions?
Oh, I'm sorry, any discussion? Is there any comments or discussion?
I just have a couple of comments. The, this subject was brought to my attention by our superintendent, and we had a legal opinion from Ms. Lewis, who is School District Attorney, that we needed to make a change to the compensation. We did research that included finding out what other districts do in the state, as well as in the area, as well as what our city council does here in Hudson. And I don't think that this puts us on par with Stillwater, the other metro districts. We're still, we would still be quite a ways behind, but given that it's been 10 years and the effective, assuming that we have two meetings a month, the average school board member pay would be going up about 500, 600. So it's not a lot, but it's in line with what most districts do is, anyway. And so I think, I think it's appropriate, and I don't know if it'll last another 10 years, but I think it's in that, in line with what's fair and reasonable.
Thank you, Jamie. I just wanted to make a comment, too, that we'll, we'll be in compliance, clearly in compliance with the law, and we certainly want to be in that kind of a position. Any other comments?
Madam Chair, I would also just speak in favor of the differential stipend or compensation for the, for the school board president. I think since moving into the vice president role, it's become even more clear to me how much more time the person who is in that president role puts into the responsibilities on the board, and so I support and think it's very appropriate that there would be a differential for that position.
Any other comments from the electorate? Okay, I'll call for the vote then. All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposing, with nay. Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you for being here.